All right, welcome to the June 17th, 2021 Northampton County Council meeting. I've asked Ron Heckman to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yeah, while I'm waiting for Linda before we call the roll, I just want to announce that we are postponing the presentation of the proclamation. We discussed it, and we'd like the young recipients to be here to receive it in person. So, we're going to delay this for a time for when they can be present. You could strike that from tonight's agenda. Ms. Embler, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Kuzick.
Present.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Giovanni.
Present.
Mr. Heckman.
Present.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Sarinski.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of June 3rd, 2021, please.
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Some passes by voice acclamation. Courtesy of the floor, no one signed in for courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone who would like to speak who did not sign in? Seeing and hearing no one. Presentation is struck. Mr. McClure, do you have an executive report for us?
Probably does.
Oh. Well. Should we get a Florida report from Mrs. Ferraro while we're waiting? I gotta do it then.
I'm not hearing it.
I just wanted to make Mrs. Ferraro wait for me. How are you, Mrs. Ferraro?
I am very good.
It's very nice to see you. No, the real reason is last night, council inquired as to what the grant limits are for the various parts of the Northampton County Rescue Plan, and I have those. I wanted to just pass those out. Apologies, council. The Northampton County Rescue Plan is in front of you tonight, funded by the American Rescue Plan, and I would simply say, let's finish the job. Last year, with our pandemic protection plan, we used CARES funding to throw our small businesses a lifeline. Let's finish the job. Last year, we used CARES funding to do COVID-19 testing when the federal government let us down. Let's finish the job. Let's use the Northampton County Rescue money to continue the vaccination clinic collaboration we have so that we can prevent a spike of any variants as we're seeing in other places. Let's finish the job. Our economy, which was crushed by the pandemic, is on the road to recovery. We are about to, should you pass the Northampton County Rescue Plan tonight, to put $25 million into Northampton County small businesses. When you save them, when you help them survive last year, now with this plan, you can help them thrive. And the necessity for it is, as I think we all know, people are still reluctant to come back. They're still reluctant to come back to our main streets. They are coming back, but they're coming back slowly. Our small businesses need us. With the CARES Act money under the pandemic protection plan, we helped nearly 800 small businesses with almost $11 million. We'll help well over 1,000 small businesses to the tune of $25 million when we're done with this plan, when we implement it. They still need our help. Let's finish the job. Let's finish the job helping our nonprofits. Our nonprofits were beleaguered, were beleaguered over the last year and a half. They need our assistance now. They're not back. Their funding streams have been limited. Their donations are down. They need our help. We're going to give them $5 million, and we're going to do it quickly, and they're going to continue to serve the public they serve. Let's finish the job. Let's move forward. We have, working together, and working with our citizenry that wore their masks, washed their hands, stayed socially distant, and that did the right thing and got vaccinated, working with them, working together, we have Northampton County on the right track, but the job is not yet done. We must pass the plan. We must help our municipalities with our Grow Norco program. We must help the small fairs and carnivals that attract so many people and who benefit from our hotel tax plan by putting a million dollars in that. Let's do that. Let's help our school districts with a million dollars in broadband. We know education is not a core function of county government, but we also know that it's a qualifying use based on the IRS guidelines. And I think it's really important for the public to know that even though we're not as limited as we were under the CARES Act, we still are constrained by the guidelines from the Treasury Department and the IRS as to how we can spend this money, which is why the plan was designed the way it's been designed. So, let's help those school districts with broadband because education has probably changed forever. And let's reserve $6 million so that we can pay for vaccinations to combat any variants that might arrive here, so that we can pay for testing if there's a spike in infections, so that we can replenish our stocks of PPE, and so that we can pay hazard pay in our 24/7 operations if, in fact, we have infections. Because as we know, not everybody in our 24/7 operations is vaccinated. So, the risk of variants getting into those operations is very real, and we need to be prepared for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. McClure?
Thank you.
Okay, 100 Old Business. We have the public hearing on the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the 2021 Northampton County Budget, Department of Community and Economic Development, Community Development Grant, Department of Community and Economic Development, American Rescue Plan Fiscal Recovery Fund." Mr. Myers and McGee introduced this ordinance at the June 3rd meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Is there any discussion among council members? Seeing, hearing none? Let's call for the vote.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other old business that we need to discuss? Seeing and hearing none, let's move on to new business. First, we have the introduction of the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance by Northampton County Council Amending Ordinance 635-2018, Concurring with the City of Easton and the Eastern Area School District and Providing for Property Tax Exemption for Certain Additional Properties in the City of Easton to be Listed as Deteriorated Property as Defined in the City of Easton Resolution Number 11-2018 pursuant to Act 76 of 1977 of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as amended, 72 PS 4722 et cetera, and Act 42 of 1977 of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as amended." Somebody want to sponsor that? Tara?
Yep.
Second sponsor, Mr. Myers. Public hearing on this, and debate possible vote will be held at the July 1st, 2021 meeting. And I believe, is this the one that there's been supporting information put forward? So, everybody got a copy of this on their desk?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Properties that you requested yesterday? Next, we have the introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving a Correction Deed for May 16, 1977 deed as recorded in deed book, Volume 564, Page 326, recorded in the office of the Recorder of Deeds in and for Northampton County at Easton, Pennsylvania, between the County of Northampton as grantor and the County of Northampton as grantee." Someone please sponsor the ordinance?
I will sponsor.
Tara Embell. Mr. McGee, public hearing again on July 1st, 2021. Next, we have the consideration of reappointments, resolution, Workforce Development Board, Lehigh Valley. Mr. Heckman, will you introduce the resolution?
Was this what we talked about yesterday? We don't know if it exists.
No, no, no.
No, this is not the same.
We're only doing things that exist tonight. Postponing anything that may or may not exist for a future date.
Good. I thought this was that board.
We will call it Fake Day, but it's not today.
Board that existed but didn't exist, okay. Resolved by Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their reappointments as indicated hereafter. Workforce Development Board. Lehigh Valley, reappointments, business category. Catherine Bailey, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, term to expire 630-23. Community-based category, Janice Comissar, Easton, PA, term to expire 630-24. Workforce community category, Joseph S. Kovalchuk, Northampton, 630-23. Small business category, David Wolfe, Easton, PA, 630-23. So, introduced.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions on these appointments? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of extension of hazard pay at Gracemont Resolution. Mr. McGee, will you introduce this?
Yes, thank you. Whereas, County of, Northampton County has identified the need in the oncoming months to continue hazard pay for Gracemont employees as frontline workers fighting COVID-19, and whereas, Northampton County is looking to compensate Gracemont employees, working directly with residents who have contracted the COVID-19 virus, and whereas, Northampton County needs to make sure shifts are full and residents have the level of care that they have come to expect from Gracemont. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Northampton County Council does authorize the Gracemont Administration to pay hazard pay at 25% for qualifying shifts throughout the nursing home. Those qualifying shifts will be determined by Gracemont's Administration based on the need of the home and guidance from the Pennsylvania Department of Health and Human Services, effective July 1st, 2021 until December 31st, 2021. So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion on this matter?
This was discussed in the committee meeting of the Finance yesterday. Thank you.
Seeing and hearing none, let's call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have the consideration of the American Rescue Plan Funding Resolution. Mr. McGee, will you introduce this?
Yes. Whereas, on March 11th, 2021, the American Rescue Plan of the Act, of Act 2021, HR 1319, was signed into law and is intended to combat the COVID-19 pandemic, including the public health and economic impacts. And whereas, Northampton County was awarded an allocation of approximately $30 million of the American Recovery Plan funding to spend on various relief efforts. And whereas, Northampton County desires to spend these funds in a quick and efficient manner so that the Lehigh Valley's economic, economy remains stable and viable in the near future. And whereas, Northampton County has identified needs in various categories to help get financial relief to those most impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas, the County of Northampton is desirous to allocate funding as follows. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the county, by the council of the County of Northampton that the executive of Northampton County is authorized to execute spending as follows. Number one, the allocation of approximately $15 million on small business grants with the assistance of the Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce. Number two, the allocation of approximately $5 million for nonprofit grants. Number three, the allocation of approximately $1 million on hotel tax grants. Number four, the allocation of approximately $1 million on Grow Norco Grants. Number five, the allocation of approximately $1 million on broadband needs for Northampton County schools. Number six, the allocation of approximately $1 million on emergency medical service grants. And number seven, the remaining approximately $6 million on personal protective equipment, vaccination efforts, testing, and hazard pay. So moved.
Thank you.
This was also discussed in Finance last night.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Ferraro.
Is this that Rising Tide, the one the Rising Tide is handling?
No.
Or is this something entirely new again?
This is new money that was allocated this year.
Right, okay. And who's going to be?
This year, next year.
And who is going to be the, you know, the fiduciary one who having the responsibility for allocating the dollars?
Mr. Barron's here, want to answer that question? I assume the county, but let's find out the truth.
We are going to be allocating that money. The $15 million is going to be with the assistance of the Chamber of Commerce to help us aggregate the information, to make sure the business is actually a business in Northampton County that has all the correct paperwork. But everything else with the nonprofits, with council's assistance, and the committees that we have set up, we're going to do the same process we did under the CARES Act with this American Recovery Act money.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on Mrs. Ferraro's question, how many small business grants did we give last time? Does anybody have that number?
Seven or eight hundred.
It was, it was approximately, we were just a little over $10 million because there were some businesses, there was money that went out, and we had approved a little bit more than we actually, than the approximate $10 million. But there were, I think, 680 businesses.
Okay.
That received grants.
So.
I thought it was closer.
Tina, how many were there? It was, it is 800 because you approved that fourth list of another 100. I apologize.
Yeah, and the reason why I ask that question is I wondered where you came up with the number of 1,000 grants.
No, we would, we would be able to have with the $15 million. Yeah, yeah, I apologize, yeah.
Okay, so, we may have additional money if we don't reach that 1,000 small businesses.
So, that, at the limit, yes. Like, at the current limit, we have the $15,000, so we would have additional money. That's why the, the resolution says approximately, because the situation, when we get these business applications in, there are certain changes. Some businesses that even council approved may not have been able to get a loan, or a loanless, a grant because a piece of paperwork didn't come in, or there was a deficiency in the paperwork, or the business was not, we had one business that council did approve that ended up being in Lehigh County because it was across the street, and we didn't realize was on a different side of the street. So, those are the kinds of things that, you know, we keep it approximate, but we anticipate giving $15 million to 1,000 businesses. We have about 280 businesses that are on the list waiting to be approved right away once we make sure they're still operating and get their paperwork.
Okay, so your sense is that there's about 200 that didn't apply last time?
Correct.
And if the 800 that would apply from the previous time, that would reach 1,000?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, my math's pretty good. Okay. Then, the other one that I wanted to bring up, and I raised this issue yesterday, I know that we're allocating a million for Northampton County schools. I would just ask that the community college be included under that umbrella. Is that possible?
We will reach out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of revising the fee schedule for the Civil Division Office of the Plathonatory Resolution. Mr. McGee, will you introduce this?
Sure, thank you. Whereas, Northampton County Civil Division Office Plathonatory processes passports for the public, and whereas, Northampton County wants to make the process efficient for the citizens who come to renew or apply for passports. And whereas, Northampton County has identified the need to process passports photos and looking to cover the cost of the material to produce these photos. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Northampton County Council does authorize the Northampton County Civil Division Office Plathonatory, Plathonatory to add $10, to add a $10 fee to its fee schedule to cover the cost to produce passport photos for individuals applying for a passport in Northampton County.
Thank you.
So moved. This was, this was discussed at the Finance Committee last night, and it's a great, great thing that the county residents can get their passports here now. That's all. So moved.
Photos.
Photos.
Any questions?
The photos.
So they can get the whole thing here.
The whole thing, yes, yes. I think that was the big holdup, is they had to go somewhere to get the passport, and until they got here, and the cost, and, you know, I know CVS does it, and some different places do it, so.
Any questions regarding this resolution? Seeing, hearing none, let's call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of matching funds awards through the Livable Landscape Grant Program Resolutions, Archibald Johnston Conservation Area, Louise Moore County Park, and Mincy Lake County Park. Ms. Sarinski, will you introduce the first resolution?
Yes. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that Northampton County will have the required funding to match the grant funding for this project, and one, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the Archibald Johnston Conservation Area, Monocacy Creek Restoration Program Grant Application to DEP. Further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Program, or his or her designee, is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations on this project. Two, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Northampton County Division of Parks and Recreation, or his/her designee, is directed to take any or and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Three, the signature page for the grant application and grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the applicant by the official who, at the time of the signing, has the title of Superintendent of Parks and Recreation. Four, if this official signed the signature page for grant application and grant agreement prior to the passage of this resolution, this grant of authority applies retroactively to the date of signing. Five, if the applicant is awarded a grant, the signature page for grant application and grant agreement signed by the above official will become the applicant grantees' executed signature page for the grant agreement, and the applicant/grantee will be bound by the grant agreement. Six, any amendment of the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the grantee by the official who, at the time of signing of the amendment, has the title specified in paragraph two, and the grantee will be bound by this amendment. We discussed this in the Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee meeting today. So moved.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on this matter? Call for the vote.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, Louise Moore County Park, Ms. Sarinski?
Do you want me to just read the, now therefore?
Please.
It's the same thing. Again. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that Northampton County will have the required funding to match the grant funding for this project, and one, the Northampton County Council hereby approves Louise Moore Park Hershey Nursery Project Grant Application to the Northern Nut Growers Association. Further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Program, or his/her designee, is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Northampton County Division of Parks and Recreation, or his/her designee, is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligation to this project. The signature page for the grant application and the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the applicant by the official who, at the time of signing, has the title of Superintendent of Parks and Recreation. Four, if this official signed the signature page for the grant application and grant agreement prior to the passage of this resolution, this grant of authority applies retroactively to the date of signing. Five, if the applicant is awarded a grant, the signature page for a grant application and grant agreement signed by the above official will become the applicant grantees' executed signature page for the grant agreement, and the applicant/grantee will be bound by the grant agreement. Six, any amendment of the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the grantee by the official who, at the time of signing of the amendment, has the title specified in paragraph two, and the grantee will be bound by the amendment. We also discussed this in the Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee meeting.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner. Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
And Mincy Lake County Park.
Awesome. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that Northampton County will have the required funding to match the grant funding for this project. The Northampton County Council hereby approves the Mincy Lake Habitat Improvement Project Grant Application to the Pennsylvania Lake Management Society Protection. Further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Program, or his/her designee, is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Two, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Northampton County Division of Parks and Recreation, or his/her designee, is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Three, the signature page for grant application and grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the applicant by the official who, at the time of signing, has the title of Superintendent of Parks and Recreation. Four, if this official signed the signature page for grant application and grant amendment prior to the passage of this resolution, this grant of authority applies retroactively to the date of signing. Five, if the applicant is awarded a grant, the signature page for grant application and grant agreement signed by the above official will become the applicant/grantees' executed signature page for the grant agreement, and the applicant/grantee will be bound by the grant agreement. Six, any amendment to the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the grantee by the official who, at the time of signing of the amendment, has the title specified in paragraph two, and the grantee will be bound by the amendment. This, again, was discussed in the Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee. So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion on this matter? Call for the vote.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next we have a consideration of proposal prohibiting tobacco use on county playground areas and similar facilities resolution. Ms. Zirinsky, will you please introduce this?
Now therefore be it resolved that on this 17th day of June 2021 pursuant to its powers under the Home Rule Charter, the County Council of Northampton directs the following. One, prohibition against the use of tobacco products in county-owned and operated playgrounds and similar facilities and within a 50-foot buffer of such facility. A, county-owned and operated playgrounds and similar facilities and within a 50-foot buffer of such facilities are hereby designated tobacco-free zones and the use of any tobacco product in any form is and shall be prohibited. B, appropriate signage will be posted at all subject sites delineating them as tobacco-free zones. The Northampton County Council hereby authorizes any other duly authorized agent or representative of the county to take whatever steps are necessary for full participation in and compliance with the resolution and/or any such other programs of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pertaining to the prohibition against the use of tobacco products as set forth in this resolution. Two, the tobacco product be defined as but is not limited to all the following. A, any product containing, made or derived from tobacco or nicotine that is intended for human consumption, whether smoked, heated, chewed, absorbed, dissolved, inhaled, snorted, sniffed, snuffed, dipped, or ingested by any means, including but not limited to cigarettes, cigars, chewing tobacco, pipe tobacco, and snuff or dipping tobacco. B, any electronic device that delivers nicotine or other substances to the person enjoying from the device, including but not limited to electronic cigarettes, e-cigarettes, vape pens, jewel devices, pipes, hookah pipes, or devices, and any other similar electronic tobacco devices which ignite tobacco and/or emit smoke, aerosol, or vapor. Two, notwithstanding any provisions to the above, to the contrary, tobacco product further includes any component, part, or accessory of a tobacco product whether or not sold separately. Tobacco products does not include any product that has been approved by the United States Food Administration for sale as a tobacco cessation product or for other therapeutic purposes where such product is marked and sold for such use. Three, any person who violates any provision of this resolution shall be directed to cease use of the tobacco product and if such person shall refuse, shall be directed to leave the county-owned and operated playgrounds and similar facilities. Four, all other resolutions, regulations, and policies of the County of Northampton, Pennsylvania not specifically amended or affected by the provision of this resolution shall remain in full force and effect. Any resolution conflicting with the provisions of this resolution shall be and the same is hereby repealed to the extent of such a conflict. Again, we discussed this in the Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee meeting. So moved.
Any further discussion?
I was just curious, how do you plan to enforce it?
We did discuss that in the Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee. Obviously, we have Parks and Recreation people that are available, but mostly this is, will be enforced by signs and other people around. It's deterrent and the signs are to be deterrent and we are hoping that people will abide by and are encouraged to. On your honor.
Wait, wait, wait. Any follow-up?
Mr. McGee.
Wait. I'll take care of that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And do you have a follow-up to that?
Me? I, no, I don't have any follow-up.
Mr. Kuzick, go ahead.
This is certainly thorough and I agree with all of it. I guess my question is why is this in the form of a resolution rather than an ordinance or as part of our park? We do have an ordinance.
Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, that governs this.
Ryan, would you like to answer that question?
Good evening. In our ordinance that was just adopted for the new park and rules and regs, it states under smoking that it's controlled by signage within any area, so this is a resolution that's providing specific areas for no smoking in the parks, mainly around the playground areas.
Does that answer the question?
To a certain extent, but I guess, just as a follow-up, why wouldn't we just adopt this as an amendment to that ordinance to give it some more teeth?
Mr. Spadoni.
I did not know that there was an ordinance for the parks. I need to look at that and then get back to you. I saw this as a standalone resolution.
We just adopted the ordinance last.
We adopted the ordinance, yeah, last week.
Two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
I'll have to look. I'll report back.
So, Mr. McGee, did you want to ask another question?
I just had a comment, but prior to the discussion here, I'll, I'll hold off. Sounds like we might be hearing more of this.
So, my question is then, do we need to table this? So he, so do I have? Yes, you may ask a question.
Excuse me. I, yeah, I think part of this too is this is a group, part of the, I think the intent from what I got listening to it was, because I had the same question you did about enforcement, but there's a lung group that, and if you use this language as possibility, you get free signage. So they'll provide the signs. You know, I mean, for me personally, I don't know if we're breaking any rules or regulations by doing it as a standalone resolution. You know, if that's what helps this organization to give us the free signage to put near the swings and whatnot. So, I mean, but it's, I mean, council has to decide along with the solicitor's advice whether or not they want to amend the ordinance. Because, I mean, I think at times, I got the sense that this wasn't raised to the level of where you had to even make it part of the overall. But, you know, I guess you can look at it either way, so I'll, I'll await legal advice.
So in the ELU meeting, we did discuss that this is part of the young lungs at play and this is a boilerplate resolution that is given by that group specifically for this signage. So, the ordinance already exists. This is clarifying what is entailed in the prohibition and it allows us to get the signs to put up on the playground so that people will see that this is what we want to do.
Oh, and I, I think this is great. I agree with, with all of this, but all a resolution does is, is a sense of council and I, and my sense is that council does agree with this. However, we, I feel that if we want to really put some teeth behind it, it should be part of the ordinance. Now, I would support, we could go either way. If we want to vote for this, it, it's fine with me, but I, I do believe that our solicitors should, you know, opine as to whether or not we, we want this or should include this as part of the ordinance.
Mr. Spadoni.
Let's do the following, and this is a suggestion. Is this an emergency? I don't think so. Let's do it for two weeks and then be sure that we're doing it the right way.
Okay.
I give the sense that everyone's for this. It sounds like a great idea. Let's do it with the proper procedure.
Sure.
So my question on procedures, do we need to table this?
Yes.
Look, you table it, remember there's no discussion after you table it, so wait until you, everybody gets a chance to talk before you table it.
Okay, but then the procedure would be to table it and then we could bring it up if it's, if you opine that a resolution is correct? If not, we can just redraft it as an ordinance amendment.
So it would be an ordinance amendment to the Parks and Recreation?
Or he'll decide.
Yeah. Well, that, that's what we're discussing.
He'll decide what it needs to be when he.
I want to talk to Mr. Cope about what he just said, that there's a section in that ordinance. He would know if anyone, I will discuss it with him as well as probably with Mr. Corriere from the Solicitor's Office. We'll be okay.
Mr. Myers?
We have a no smoking ordinance already. Correct.
I don't want to speak for, may I?
Go ahead.
I don't want to speak for the park director, but the thing that they just, we just approved the last meeting or, it, it says in there, it says in designated areas. Okay, so this is clarifying, like Commissioner Zirinsky said, this is, this is clarifying that ordinance. And, and I understand the teeth thing, so, you know, I'm okay with that. I, I saw this out there in the state, there's a lot of other places that are going with this, some of them do it on a resolution. That's, you know, so. I think it's, I think it's great leadership that we're protecting our young and putting these signs up whether they get policed or not. I think our parents, or their parents will police that and I think it's a great thing and it's not really discriminating on smokers, they have a place they can still go, so, you know, we don't want to do that either, so that's all I have.
Mr. Spadoni, I have a question for you. Is there any harm if we pass a resolution and it isn't incorrect to come back with an ordinance? Does it matter?
No. But I will opine whether you need an ordinance to be effective with the ordinance.
Mr. Lot.
Yeah, it says discussed in committee meeting. The, to say this has to have teeth, we kind of agreed as a council, this is going to be enforced by Mr. Heckman. Please do not smoke next to, there's the sign. My child is here. So it's going to be enforced by a public. So, I mean, I hear what you're saying, we want to do it right and we want to preserve, but this isn't something that really needs a lot of legal teeth behind it. This is something that is almost a suggestion, just shy of it. So maybe a resolution is actually appropriate. I'm not a solicitor, but I, I don't think council is looking to create a law here, so to speak, as much as trying to do good for the community with some signage to educate people and say, are we really going to patrol these playgrounds? Are we really going to ever, you know, need an ordinance to, 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 to have this, you know, used? I, I don't believe so. It's more to get the signs. So that's just my thought. I mean, I get it, do it right, but I think we could do it with a resolution and if it's wrong, we could always check it later. But whatever this body decides, I'm good with, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, the fact is, we already have the ordinance, the ordinance exists. This resolution just clarifies what that ordinance is meant to enforce and then gives us the signage, again. So this young lungs at play group, they've been passing these resolutions. So this isn't, this has precedent. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
Was this run by us before we got it today?
At the ELU meeting. Yeah, this, we discussed this today.
No, I was there. I mean, did, did you, did you get a chance, did anybody get a chance to proofread this from council before we started talking about it today? Just my, the reason I'm asking that question is, this can happen sometimes. If something comes to council, it should pass through the clerk or even the solicitor so that we can avoid issues and that's why we usually have a time period put on it, because especially boilerplates, because we all agree that this is great. It's going to pass nine to nothing, however we do it. But the thing is, boilerplates groups put things together like boilerplate groups do. They'll throw the kitchen sink in, they'll say, you know, if there's a match and, 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 you know, I get it, because that, every group has their thing, but it doesn't necessarily compute with the county government. So, is there any harm in this? I, I, as opposed to Mr. Kuzick, I think you could just pass the damn resolution, pardon my French. But, but at the end of the day, you could also say it should be part of the ordinance, but I think we could avoid this if once we have a resolution, a council manic action that has to take place should pass through the clerk and the solicitor before we even vote on it. And, and, and we had a discussion, but if somebody's not on the committee and they bring it up, they're a council member. This is a council action. It's our job to, to, to do this and to do it right. And so, you know, this isn't like brain surgery, but at the same time, I think that sometimes this happens, especially when we get special interest group stuff handed to us and we just say, hey, there's no harm in it, let's pass it. But there are formats that we should follow. I mean, I had it out earlier, again, the Charter Administrative Code, it's very clear. I mean, you can argue back and forth about interpretation, but I think we could pass the resolution if you want to. I think if you want to do an ordinance, that gives it a more of a punch, it's now in county law. But I tend to agree that we already said you can't use tobacco and it can be enforced. So to me, you don't necessarily need to make this part of, of the, of the ordinance, of the code, but I'll leave it at that. If we don't vote on this, I would just say, let's table it then for two weeks because it's not an emergency and then Mr. Spadoni can give us his opine and, and we can move forward. I mean, you know, it's, I, I think we spent a lot of time on this and it's all procedural.
Yeah, I think we're overthinking this one.
Excuse me. Mr. McGee.
I, I, Mr. Heckman, I do think this, did, this was through the emails and they're coming through the committee agenda stuff for the committee tonight and I do, you know, understand, I, I think if we go the ordinance way after hearing everybody, we're just going to delay the signs. And so I do agree with, just vote on it tonight.
Do I make a suggestion?
Yes.
My advice is to pass the resolution and I will opine about the ordinance.
I approve, I move, I make, I move the motion.
Well, it's already moved. We just have to end the discussion. Would you like to say the last word, Mr. Myers?
Yeah, I cannot believe we just spent 15 minutes on this bullshit. You know what I'm saying, it's just like that. It's a simple thing that we already have an ordinance. Only thing we're trying to do is get a little, we're allowing the man next to him to tell a guy, go somewhere else and smoke. And I can't believe we are going through this. We do this too often, we need to stop this. Nitpicking nothing. Pass the damn thing and move on.
Call a question.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Consideration of license agreement with Twin Rivers Tubing LLC Resolution. Ms. Zirinsky.
Whereas on June 8th, 2021, the Northampton County Council received a request from the county executive for county council to adopt a resolution endorsing a license agreement between the County of Northampton and Twin Rivers Tubing LLC for their limited use of property along the Delaware River. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a license with Twin Rivers Tubing LLC. We also discussed this at the ELU meeting. So moved.
Any discussion? My understanding is that this is the compromise that was reached as opposed to the last time that we had a question about whether something needed to be in ordinance or not. And thank you, Mr. Spadoni and Mr. Corriere for working out this arrangement.
I'll, I'll just say, since I brought it up last time, that this is outstanding legal work, so thank you to our solicitor and the solicitor's office for getting this right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzick. Any other discussion on this matter?
No.
Call for the vote.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yeah.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next we have a consideration of Administrative Code Article 13, Contract Resolutions, King Spry, Herman, Freund, and Fall Outside Counsel General and King Spry, Herman, Freund, and Fall Outside Counsel Workers Compensation. Mr. McGee, will you introduce the first resolution?
Whereas, Northampton County Administrative Code Article 13, Procurement and Disposition of County Property, Section 13.15, Contracts and Agreements. Number one requires approval from the county council for any contract exceeding $100,000 which was awarded using the competitive negotiation, negotiations after competitive sealed bidding and non-competitive negotiation sealed selection methods. For contracts and renewal clauses, the entire potential payout, if all renewal clauses are exercised under the terms of the contract must be considered and determined if council approval is necessary. And whereas, Northampton County Administrative Code 11, Office of the Solicitor, Section 11.03, states the, excuse me, the solicitor with approval of the county executive and the county council may retain outside legal counsel where necessary. And whereas on June 8th, 2021, the county, the Northampton County Council received a request from the county executive for the county council to adopt a resolution approving a three-year contract with King Spry, Herman, Freund, and Fall for general outside legal counsel according to the billing rates included in the proposal. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documents to approve a contract with King Spry. So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion on this matter? We discussed this yesterday at Finance.
Oh, okay, I, I'm sorry I wasn't there, but I was just curious as to what their per-hour rate is going to be.
That was mentioned.
Mrs. Ferris here?[1695.13]
for general outside legal counsel according to the billing rates included in the proposal. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documents to approve a contract with King Spry. So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion on this matter? We discussed this yesterday at finance. Oh, okay, I'm sorry I wasn't there. But I was just curious as to what their per hour rate is going to be.
That was mentioned.
And I think you have that also on your desk as well, Mrs. Ferraro. Where is? The supporting document is probably on your desk as well. Okay, okay. Okay. I want to say $200 an hour, but I could be wrong.
I know it was $40 less.
Is it 200?
This is for the, it's the outside.
General?
General, yes, there were two different ones. So, the general is $225 for partners, $200 for associates, and $100 for paralegals per hour.
Is there a reduction on that then?
Not on that one, on the workers' comp. So on the workers' comp, they're doing a blended fee, so it doesn't matter whether it's an associate or a partner. That will be $175 per hour and $95 per hour for paralegals.
Any other questions regarding this first one? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yep.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. And now we have the same company for outside counsel workers' compensation. Mr. McGee?
I'm going to skip the first whereas because it's redundant. Whereas, the Northampton County Administrative Code 11, Office of the Solicitor, Section 1101, states the solicitor with approval of the county executive and county council may retain outside legal counsel where necessary. And whereas on June 8th, 2021, the Northampton County Council received a request from the county executive and county council to adopt a resolution approving a three-year contract with King Spry for outside legal counsel for workers' compensation matters with the total amount of the award based upon the actual services provided. Now therefore be it resolved, Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documents to approve a contract with King Spry. So moved.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding this matter? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yep.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Is there any other new business to discuss this evening? Yes, Mrs. Ferraro.
This is not new business, I'm sorry. But I just felt like I'd like to say, I'm in my swan song here, my waning months of my terms. And I just think there's several things that have been kicked down the road for so long. And I'm wondering if there's anything going to be allocated in the budget to begin some of these studies. Assessment, salaries. Ron Heckman and I came in on the Barston study. Like Mark Twain came in on Haley's comment, went out with Haley's comment. Maybe I can come in on Barston and go out with Barston. And the other thing is the Home Rule Charter. Getting a group together, put something in the budget to start really looking at the Home Rule Charter. Those are things that have been kicked down the road for as long as I can remember. So, not that I'm willing to chair any of them at the moment.
How's your foot feeling?
But I'm wondering if any of it is being addressed in our budget to start putting some money aside for some of these things.
We'll have to ask that question in about a month or two. Because I believe they're working on the budget now.
Right.
We do have a question about a ghost entity that you can answer. What's the name of the thing we're looking for? Maybe she remembers. The Community Economic.
The what?
Says Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee.
She's supposed to be here, maybe? We'll ask you later, because we figure you're the only one who may know.
I'm foggy.
Thank you. Any other new business? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to take a minute, because, I mean, we're almost done, thank goodness. So I would say this. I mean, I think what Mr. Kuzic requested was legitimate, and his concern was legitimate. But I think it's important for us, as I've listened to sometimes, remember that not everything has to pass through a solicitor's hands. We're here to pass county laws, pass resolutions, and you could have five attorneys look at something. You'll get five, well, one attorney told me, once you have five attorneys look at something, you'll get six opinions. So, I mean, while we're going to rely on him, but you're here to do what voters and the charter, I think if you read it, envision this legislative body as a deliberative body that makes and passes resolve, which is a resolution, or county law. And that's your judgment, what you think is in the best way to handle something. And you're going to have people who may say, well, that's the wrong way to do it. Well, all right, then if they feel that way about it, they can give their reasons. If you agree, great, change it. If you don't, and they say, well, take you to court, then say, fine, that's why we have a solicitor. I don't think the taxpayers would enjoy that, but so be it. But my point is, sometimes it seems like we do get into things that we really don't have to. I mean, it's, if you have five reasonable people up here, and they decide on doing something, unless there's an aggrieved party out there that takes you to court, it's what it's going to be. So I just, and I'm not trying to take any thunder away from, from Mr. Spadoni, who I've known many, many years. I want him to opine as often as he possibly can. But I think in some ways he may agree that, that as a deliberative body, the legislative body, the governing body of the county, you're also elected for your judgment, and your judgment is your judgment. And you don't have to always worry about, am I going to go, you know, who's going to do this? You know, you do what you do. I think Peg's known that for a long time. I mean, sometimes you step in quicksand, and sometimes you don't. Your legal advice is helpful, but ultimately, our job is to, is to move on things we think are of interest and importance to the citizens of Northampton County. So I just wanted to throw that out there before I go off to the shore for the first time in two years. And you could probably tell it, I'm crazy, because I haven't had salt air in two years. So I'll be much better when I get back. You've been living it, Peg. You've been living the dream. I haven't. Anyway, that's all I have to say. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. McGee?
I just want to take a minute. I know we're getting ready to get out of here. And I didn't really comment on the young lungs at play because of all the back and forth. And kind of like lost my, and I know it's already passed. But I saw this out there in Pennsylvania and, you know, a bunch of different parks. And I just want to, I just want to thank, you know, Mr. Cope for looking at it and putting it forward. This is where we protect our young, right here, okay? And it might not be your kid, it might be your, it might be somebody else's or your nephew. And it's these little things that make a big difference. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or new business? We have any committee reports for council? Mr. Myers?
We had a courts and corrections meeting yesterday. It was a good meeting. We heard from the district attorney. We heard from the prison. Sheriff was not around. We heard from the court administrator and to compliment our executive, he followed suit and gave the folks off tomorrow for Juneteenth because of a sign as a national holiday, and I commend you for that. And it's going to go a long way in our community. Thank you. And that's pretty much all I have from my meeting for yesterday. It was a good one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Ms. Zarinski?
I'll just say, we had a Energy, Environment and Land Use Committee meeting today. And the resolutions discussed tonight have already been thoroughly discussed again in this committee meeting, so I'm not going to review them. But everything that we discussed in the meeting, we passed tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGee?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Commissioner Vargo Hefner for chairing the Finance Committee. I was on my way back from work. I did listen in on the phone, and then I finally got here for the next committee meeting. Traffic was pretty bad on 22 yesterday. So everything that we discussed in finance was approved tonight. And a lot of the discussion was in the Finance Committee. A lot of the answers were answered. Administration got up and took care of a lot of the questions. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heckman?
We had a Personnel Committee meeting yesterday, the fruits of which you voted on tonight. Thank you.
Any other committee meetings? Any liaison reports? Mr. Kuzic?
Yeah, yesterday, CCAP had a conference call regarding the elections legislation. Now, the good news is that our two priorities are included. The bad news is that it's unlikely to pass because of some other things that are included in the legislation. We are still hopeful that should the present bill that's been put forward get shot down, that, you know, maybe as a compromise, our two priorities may be able to get through. And then the other piece is that CCAP will be held in person at Hershey first week of August. So if you're interested, please sign up.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? I have one GPA met last Tuesday. We'll start with the good news, that $100,000 grant was garnered for the Glendon Hotel project.
Oh, my gosh.
We had originally requested $300,000. We got $100,000. And that the next phase of the project, the rezoning was approved by the borough and for a five-unit plan. So there's going to be, the next step is to bid out the demolition of the existing property. I suggested we do a fundraiser to try to, like, see who wants to bid on the sign, but nobody was interested in that, so the sign is still up for grabs. That's the good news. Where's Mr. Dirtger to help me with the bad news? Let me see if I do this correctly. Bridge 41. Is that, Bridge 41 had a 16-month delay, is that correct? Okay, thank you. Then forget that. That's what I have. All the milestone payments are met. Most of the bridges are complete. We have three that are outstanding on work this year that are sort of at a standstill? Yes, no? Look, five at a standstill. Thank you. We asked our Greg Koplinsky why, and he didn't have an answer. So we're back to where we were. Like, we made a lot of progress, and we got really on target. All the milestone payments were made, and now we're at a standstill again. So hopefully next month we'll have better answers. I think there's some issues with some utilities, but we've done everything we can as far as the county to move this project forward.
That was the bad news.
The bad news is it should be done. And we're so close, but yet so far. I guess that's the nicest way to say it. But the Glendon Hotel is coming down. Yeah, we don't know. We ain't bid on it. It's up for grabs. Any other committee liaison reports? Council clerk report?
Nothing.
Solicitor report?
Nothing.
Motion to adjourn?
Bye.
Yep. Who's the second?
I'll second.
Jivo, Jivo.
No, Tom and Carrie.
Tom. Tom, I'm just going to start looking at you to answer questions. I'm going to say, everybody else talk. Do you have anything to say for now?